Started council first item is a discussion of financial advisory committee. Put this on there as a result, I had heard, you know, comments from a couple of council members about potentially trying to put together a financial advisory committee just to assist the city council in financial decisions, financial oversight of the budget, and just any matters of financial interest that we may have for them. I guess I just want, and that's a really big step, so I'd like to hear from the council what your thoughts are on, you know, recombining a finance, a financial advisory committee. Just a little bit of history, there was one put together between 2008 and 2012. After the 2012 election, the finance committee, they all resigned at the same time, and we never put it back together. The council has been putting together the budget without a finance committee since that time. I read some comments about, you know, the finance committee from Mr. Watkins, he said they balanced the budget, and I'd like to tell Mr. Watkins that not only did the council budget, balanced the budget, but they reduced the debt an additional $16 million in the past four years. So, I think the council did an admirable job during that time. However, it doesn't ever hurt to have another set of eyes on the finances and to take advice from people that have a lot of time to spend on this. So, council, I'll open the floor to discussion.
Yeah, that was my thought, Jack, was, you know, we know we've got significant amount of money that's going to be spent here in the next few years with infrastructure. So, I just thought it'd be a good idea to get a committee back together that could advise us, help advise us on a long-range strategic financial plan of how to fund this.
What, have you looked at the formation of how that committee was put together?
No, I did, I contacted Chuck Zunk, who was the chairman of the last financial committee, and briefly spoke to him, and he said he would be interested if needed, and be glad to assist in getting a committee put together with council's recommendations of who would be on that committee.
Any idea how many people you would envision on that?
I would say, you know, five to seven at the most, seven.
How many did they have? Do you know how many they had?
I don't know how many there were on it.
Any other thoughts on that?
No, I just think it'd be a good, you know, not trying to short anybody here on the council, but like you said, get some volunteers with business background, financial background would be, I think, advantageous to do.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of talent and fair hope that's willing to donate their time, and we certainly try to cover as much as we can, but we're limited on time, and I've got a full-time job outside of this. So, I think with Dever's last day being September 30th, I think it'd be good to have some folks there that can help with any kind of transition, provide some more stability maybe to review everything. We just, we've got a lot of expertise here and a lot of people that are willing to help. I've heard a few different suggestions from other people who've been on finance committees. One would be that you go with five people, and each council person nominates one person to serve on the committee. Other ideas to, you know, we talked to Chuck, and we headed it up before, to ask him who he'd like to work with. I think five is a good number, but, you know, not everybody's going to be able to make it every time. Seven might need to be the number, just so there's enough people.
Sometimes a five's a better number, because you only have to have three there instead of four.
Yeah, that's true.
Kevin, any thoughts?
Yeah, in my, in thinking about all this when it was brought up to me, I just want to emphasize the fact that this is strictly advisory-only. I think some of the problems we got into last time, they were more or less, the financial committee basically set precedent, and I want them to understand that the council is the one with the final decision as far as what we will and won't do with the budget. But I do believe, as Robert said, with the amount of money that we are going to be spending here in the next, in the future, to help offset these problems where may or may not occur with the infrastructure, we do need as many eyes as we can on it, and as long as they understand it's strictly advisory role only. And as far as how many people, I first said three, but it always brought to my attention that three may be too little, because you can't talk to just one guy about it outside the group, because that would be a majority, and that's exactly correct. So, a minimum would have to be five, and I think five would be plenty.
I don't disagree with any of you. I would, I think that I would welcome the opportunity to have some people to look at our numbers and, you know, give us advice. That's what an advisory committee does, and I think that Chuck, if he's willing to serve the city again, did a great job. I did hear, you know, some rumbling from staff, you know, back around that time, that they would like to tweak it a little bit, and I think that that is really what Councilman Boone was addressing, and that they are an advisory role and not, you know, given free rein, but giving free rein to give advice only. I'd like to also take a look at that ordinance that founded that committee. And, I mean, the thing is, if it's already in place and it already exists, it may be as simple as just naming the people to it. I don't know.
I don't believe it was ever disbanded.
Do you know, Lisa, was it ever dis, I mean, I don't know that we eliminated the committee, we just never made it active by putting people on it.
I would have to look, I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, I'm not either. Were you looking at that, Lisa? So, if council's willing, it may be just a simple matter of naming people to it. It sounds like at least four of us, which is a majority, are in favor of reviving it, so we can get that on the next meeting if y'all want, but then it comes down to, you know, that will only entail naming people to serve on it, so.
What were some of the cons of the last time? I mean, what were some of the, what's the downside to having?
You know, I had, I really didn't want to get into that too much because of so much personal, but I think that the council had given them a lot of authority, and I felt like there were some staff members at the time that are no longer with the city that felt like they were getting their toes stepped on from time to time. And, you know, you, the staff is caught between a council and a mayor and advisory committee, and sometimes it makes it difficult to know who you're working for.
Oh, I think it's an excellent idea. I think that in 2012, when they all left, you know, maybe they should have had one continue, but I know that if it was dismantled and there were pros and cons, I understand why, but I thoroughly agree that it would be of huge help.
Well, I like Jimmy's idea of the council members picking one person, each picking one, and so, why don't we all try to get a name to Lisa before the next meeting? Robert, I believe that you mentioned that Chuck might have had one person or so that he wanted on there, and I think that that could be, you know, named under, you know, a council member, if they're so willing.
Okay.
I don't know who those are.
I'll talk to Chuck.
Talk to him.
He's an excellent choice.
Okay, very good. All right, well, that's done. If you'll just get that to Lisa, and we'll move forward with that. Oh, and then, I want to look at that ordinance, Lisa, and the bylaws of that committee as well.
I'll give it to you.
I don't think that we should necessarily jump in and try to change them, but I do want to look at them in case, you know, we might, we might want to look at them, and you might just put them in everybody's box, and see if they want to be, see if they need to be tweaked. Do you have copies of that put in everybody's box? Did you throw that over there?
That's what Chuck gave me.
Okay. All right. All right, next item, budget discussions. I just have various remaining departments. Jill, who's going to call them up?
I think that's Catty, Jeff Montgomery.
Okay. Jeff, could you hear that?
He's probably not going to.
He'll hear us.
Or the next person.
Um, we can have.
He's going to.
Give him a minute to get here.
There he is.
Sorry. Thank you, sir.
I'll add to mine, so, most of my stuff we've gone over. But I just wanted to kind of reiterate my need to add some additional positions under the IT department. Right now, we just have two. We have an IT technician, kind of like a low-level, then a IT director. So, I'd like to have something in the middle that my employees can work towards, one being a network administrator and the other one being a systems administrator. And I would like to go ahead and see if I can fill the system administrator position next year, go ahead and fund it, but just leave the network administrator unfunded for right now. I'm doing that role myself, but eventually we'll need to add somebody into that slot. Next page, just general computer expenses. This is pretty much a duplicate of what we've gone over with the police department and the utilities. This is just their portion, the general funds portion of those items. A couple, a couple items that were added to this one that wouldn't be in the utilities was a laptop for the HR position, and a new camera. This camera is going to be used to take photographs for the website, as well as be used for a video camera for live streaming events like town hall meetings and other meetings that aren't in this building, because we've got mounted cameras in here. I just need a better camera that I can take with me. Next page is my, it's labeled telephone, but it's really communications. It's a communications budget. It's just the phone system support, phone services split out between, this is the general funds portion of it. And I'm not sure if we're going over that today, but the last page is just the, my capital purchases that I've requested. If you have any questions about those, I'll be happy to answer.
What's the AS400, Randy Holloway's services and?
Right.
AS400's support?
AS400, we are probably a year away from turning that machine off, but in the meantime, we, there are some departments still using that, and there's, Randy Holloway is our support tech for that, for that system. And I just need a little money in the budget in case we were to have an issue with that system, I could be, would be able to call him in and have it fixed. That's a specialty that I don't have, that AS400.
What was your capital budget this past year? Do you know?
The total amount, I'm not sure. I have one item remaining from my capital purchases that I'll be bringing to council in the next week, a couple of weeks, just for the Wi-Fi for downtown. I'm going to try to do half of that project this year and finish it off next year. They'll never be finished, I can always expand it, but what I have in mind, I'd like to cover the downtown area by next year.
These, are these yours that are highlighted, or what are those other things on the page?
Highlighted, the ones highlighted are mine.
Okay, I saw a used forklift.
Nah.
IT department.
That'd be, yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't be me. Yeah.
So, how many, some of these items on IT, I mean, how often are they having to be upgraded or replaced? I'm looking, you know, 300 for CAD.
Which page are you on?
Oh, okay. Right, okay, so, the CAD. The CAD system the police department currently has, in my opinion, is a little outdated. When we install programs for that CAD system to work, we're installing programs that are from 2000, and to me, that shows that that company's not keeping their software up to date. By running old software that's not supported is not ideal. So, the system that we use, the unit system, has a CAD plugin, so might as well integrate it all into one system, so we don't have duplication of information. We're going to be.
A $300,000 CAD plugin.
The CAD system that we have now is about that price, too.
I mean, how frequently is that in the budget? I mean, is that?
Oh, very rare.
Okay, so not, not in two years?
It's a 10-year, yeah, investment, if not more.
Gotcha.
When was the last time we purchased?
I wasn't around. No, I'm sorry, I've been here six years, so it's been here longer than six years than I'm aware of. And this is, this is the CAD software that goes with the dispatchers, and this is the software that the officers use to keep track of cases, attach images, take notes. It's their day-to-day software.
Then maybe you need to tell me what CAD stands for.
Computerated Dispatch, that's what CAD stands for.
Oh, not design.
Not design.
It's not SolidWorks, then?
No, a different type of CAD.
I was trying to make that add up, right?
Right.
And I thought, well, surely the police department doesn't need design software.
Draw a picture.
So, I thought that must be the planning department. So, it is the police department.
It is the police department.
Hmm. On your communications budget?
Yes.
I'm looking at some of these like Southern Link, $30,000 and $200,000. Is that not in each of the other departments? Do they not have their, is this, what kind of equipment is that for?
Jill, is that number including the upgrade? That does seem a little high.
I know we added that. And Jack, that does seem a little high. I think I, I think that if you divide that number by five, that's actually the general funds portion. I think I put the number in there.
You got the general fund portion of that, okay.
Right.
That's probably maybe true of all of these, then?
Right. It's more.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like you put Southern Link in all of them, Jeff.
I'm thinking.
So, $30,000 is just general.
Just their portion.
But you put something else, because gases is just 6,000.
Right, so.
The number that should be there.
It's $6,040. I apologize, that's the, that's the base number, and that's, the $6,040 is its general funds portion.
And so, for the others, is that's all general fund portion falls under your department there?
Right.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes, sir, Kevin.
Getting back on the last page.
Yes, sir.
The radios. These upgrades for radios that we already have are getting new radios.
P25 radios, what, John Serra Cino requested these. Right now, if we were to have an emergency, we don't have, we would not have reliable communication back to the county, and with other fire department, police department agencies, with these radios, would, you know, we would allow, to hand these out to supervisors, and I'd say the incident commander, and everybody would have a radio that they can use to communicate with each other and to the county.
So, these would be new radios?
They'd be brand-new radios, yeah.
How about the public works radios?
Public works radios, they're utilizing the old police department system, and they, a lot of them are worn out, the radios that are in the current trucks, I would be replacing some, and they've bought some new trucks recently that I've got to add to. So, that's kind of a combination of just replacing some old radios and purchasing new ones to keep the public works department going. There's John.
John's the one that come up and.
I just wanted to talk in a little bit, I know Jeff's doing a great job, but one of the biggest problems, our biggest problems facing the country and natural, and man-made disasters, is communications, it's number one nationwide. The P25 system is a nationally-recognized system, and we have it at the PD, and the fire department has it. It's the best thing going. So, when everything else goes down, hopefully that system will be up and going, and the supervisor will be able to maintain contact during a storm or any natural disaster. But it is a nationally-recognized system.
How many radios does this 26,000 buy?
Was it 12? They're very expensive. That's why the whole sys, that's why the whole city's not on that system right now. That's why only fire and police are on it.
I'm glad you clarified that, that was a good question. These are the radios that we recently purchased, a year.
For fire, well, the fire department got a grant, and the police department, y'all purchased them for the police department, because it's such a good system, but the whole city going on it, it was just, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's about six radios.
Six radios?
Basically, this would be used in emergency cases only?
Yes, just for emergencies, and when everything else goes down, that's the best communications out there. The county uses them, I think the state, I think the state's on the P25 system, too.
So, they're almost $4,500.
The state, the whole country's on the P25, that's the standard that everybody's moving to.
And see, that's why, that's why the fire department got the grant on it, because it's a nationally-recognized system, that's why FEMA ended up giving them a grant on it, because they want everyone on that system, because it's so reliable.
Do we have a, it seems like the last radios and consoles that we bought for the police department had a pretty big ticket for the software upgrades and the maintenance contract every year?
I think Chris Ellis is still negotiating that with the county. I know the council approved the city side, but once Chris solidifies that contract with the county, they're going to be taking care of the maintenance for the system as a whole.
Okay.
All we have to take care of is the dispatch consoles, there, we've got three dispatch console stations that we have to support.
I was thinking it was the Motorola radios that had the, you know, we had to purchase the maintenance agreement each year.
Right, but the, we, there was a contract signed, well, it's not finalized yet, but the contract states that the county will be taking over that expense.
Okay.
Just waiting on Chris to finish negotiating with that.
Any other questions, counsel, for Jeff?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, while I'm here, can I go ahead and do my department head update? Do you want me to come back during that time?
How long is it going to take?
Wanted to show you a couple pages of the new website, if you want to take a look.
You need to make it about two minutes?
I'm going to make it in two minutes.
When you get to these budgets, or Jill's going to be after me.
Okay. Let me see if I can do that without messing up too much here. All right. I've been working on this for several months when I get time. The problem with our current website is, we don't have the backend code, we can't change the layout, the look, can't add the new features that we want to, so I've, with the help of Sean in my department, we've tried to come up with a system that's easy to navigate and easy to maintain and add to. And this is just what, right now, what we have the homepage looking like, and what we've, oh, let me, sorry, concentrated on is ease of navigation. So, we've utilized this new menu system called Jumbo Menus or Mega Menus, where everything is on one menu, you don't have to keep scrolling down, it's just, everything's easy to find. We divided the four, the city kind of into four categories, community departments, government, and news and calendar. Under that, the most visited link for our site is the calendar, that's, I've kind of made that front and center. Below that, put important announcements to try to grab people's attention. We did get one, a couple, not one, we got a couple complaints about the new recycling schedule not being easy to find, so whenever we change something, it's going to affect a lot of people. I've got a place here on the homepage where it's easy to find. If I'm talking too fast, I'm sorry, let me, if you've got any questions, just let me know. As you scroll down, the most visited meetings, I've placed them on the homepage, city council, planning, airport authority, and then town hall meetings, and below that on the homepage, I just kind of wanted to highlight some of the projects that we're working on. I've got to update this before we go live, but we've got, I'm just kind of highlighting the additional parking at the library, some culvert that I found, we got sewer plant upgrades, soccer field complex, so people can see where their money's going. You click on them, you're going to get kind of details of the project, the timeline, the cost, on those projects. On the footer, I've added, you're going to find recent posts and polls, we're still kind of working out the text on that, it's a little hard to read, but we can add polls to poll on anything you want to, basically. And I'll just show you a sub-page before I leave, I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
What is a recent post?
Recent post, got like a news item, a new page added, something that's just recent, new to the website. Under city council, I'll just show you a sub-page of that. We're still working out these buttons, I think they need to be a little bit smaller, but every sub-page is going to have the second most visited links, bill pay, employment, calendar, and the peer camera. I've tried to keep everything to one page instead of having to click around, so, under the, for example, under the city council page, I've got both meetings there and the agenda all on one page. You can download the agenda from here, and hopefully it'd be easier to find.
That's not tonight's agenda.
That's not tonight's agenda, that's back in January 23. So, I know I blew that, threw that kind of fast, but just wanted to show you the direction that I'm going, and I'm hoping.
Looks good. It does look good, I like that.
Yeah, good.
But you're doing this in your spare time.
Right.
He's really put a lot of work into this, and I appreciate it.
That's why it's not done yet, but.
[laughing].
I was hoping the end of this month, I ran into a snag with the mobile side of it, the, it's going to be formatted for your phone, I was having a lot of issues with the menu, and I finally got that worked out this weekend. So, I'm, I know, I was shooting for the end of the month, but now I'm going to try the middle, middle of next month, that's where I'm going towards now. All right, with that, I'll let somebody else.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
We have planning and building up next.
Is that together?
Yeah, we do, together. I think mine's pretty simple, we don't have anything compared.
Must be, you didn't bring any papers?
I didn't, I didn't.
I ain't done anything, thank you.
The one thing that I think was in there, I think with Jill's, that, you know, the training and travel, we're going to try to do more virtual training. There are a couple classes that I like to go to for, I have the ASEP, and you got to do continuing education, so that's, I think that's unchanged from previous years, I believe, with that, so. From that perspective, I don't think there's anything else major in ours that's significant, I don't think.
Yeah, from our standpoint on the building side, we've got a lot of just normal annual expenses, permit cards, inspection records, things of that nature. I did ask to create a new position, but I'm not looking to hire another person. Tomorrow night, we are having a, an open house on our FEMA flood maps, and there's some changes, we're going to be extremely busy with them. So, what I've asked to do, I created the coastal constructor, construction position, which is something that several other communities have, and I have a person in our department that would like to fill that position. That way, they can, they can help me with all of the, we're about to get very busy with a lot of FEMA submittals and paperwork and things like that. So, we'll do it with current staff, but I would like to create that specific position. Capital purchases, I did ask for two vehicles this year, which would be the end of the vehicles that we need to purchase with the three used ALDOT vehicles that we got last year. These are our final two that we had that are, that are old and outdated. I did ask for these to be new vehicles. One thing, we do not have a four-wheel-drive vehicle in the building department, and I've had several instances where I've had to take my personal truck out to Old Battle's place, because that's the only way you can get in and out, is four-wheel drive. So, I would like to have a four-wheel drive, I'd like to have two four-wheel-drive vehicles that we can use in the department, because we're going off into a lot of backwoods and muddy areas, and it would certainly be of use to us. because we're going off into a lot of backwoods and muddy areas, and it would certainly be of use to us.
Questions, council?
Yeah, we've just, and same with Wayne. Absolutely. Well, we could have. Yeah, we've got a lot of training, conferences, all of the inspectors. We typically, depending on how many certifications you have, we have to have between 45 and 60 hours every three years. Murray, myself, and Billy have to have 60 hours every three years. Plus, I've got floodplain accreditation, so there's a lot of school in there for us to travel. We're trying, as Wayne mentioned, to do as much of it locally as we can. If there's local stuff, we are absolutely going to take advantage of it.
All right. I guess so. That's it?
Thank you.
Jill?
How y'all doing?
Good.
I got six items. One of them I got down there is upgrade tooling. This is some specialty tools, plus some tools that each mechanic can roll up to the car. Right now, they work out of a central toolbox. A lot of time lost during the day, walking back and forth. This will put it right there, right there with them, and they can be responsible for it. Right now, we buy a lot of tools. I see going in and out of the shop. Everybody at the city uses them, so I see just a lot of lost time during the day. I had them in toolbox, where they were responsible for them. I think we gained a lot of work. Number two is software upgrades. This is a lot of the ALDATA, Cummins, International stuff that I have to pay for on a yearly basis. I got $4,500 down there for that. I put in there for a new service truck. We got a 1981, and I think the other one's about a 90 model. I wouldn't be opposed to going to state and get a truck if I could, but I put 35 in there just in case I can't find one up there. We got floor jacks are very unsafe down there. They're old. I asked for three of them, $1,500. Next thing is outside one of the bay doors, the concrete is busted. The footer up under the concrete is gone. Some of these fire trucks and garbage trucks, when they come in, they lean way over. Trying to just get them up in the shop, put $7,500 in there to dig all that out, put us a new footer in there, put us some new concrete on it before something gets, somebody hits the door or something with it. And the asphalt around the shop is terrible. I guessed around $65,000 to get it up to par. That's all I asked for. And training, our vendors are coming forward and doing a lot of free training for us during the year to keep these techs up to par on the new stuff coming out.
What'd you say for the tooling? How much?
Eight.
I think that'll give all of them a good setup.
If you look at that last sheet that Jeff handed us, I believe that a lot of these are in there. You go just below meters pickup, you got mechanics, new service truck, three-quarter tons. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Then you got, is it two three-ton floor jacks or three two-ton?
Three.
You wanted three. Are they all three-ton?
Two, two-three-ton. Two-three-ton.
Totally. Quietly, we're the two.
So that goes down to about new asphalt, I believe, that below that looks like some other, it's probably some of John Serracino's stuff, I would imagine. Questions for Tim? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, man.
Hey, Tim, how are the lifts doing down there?
They're great.
Okay. Jill?
Do you want to come with the meter part? Hello.
Hello, Jennifer.
So we have discussed moving or separating the meter department and the revenue department. And this just pertains to the revenue department because that's what I deal with.
The thought was that putting revenue, I mean, metering with utilities, because it is all utilities, and then bringing in all customer service into one spot for citizens. It would be easier for citizens to come to one spot and pay for many different things instead of going to two different buildings.
Would you put all of that under, so that would all, all the labor expense would go now be shared among the utilities?
The metering would be. It's already financial.
Just metering? And it currently is?
Yes.
No, it's being paid out of revenue. It's being paid, it's revenue and meter are together, and they're being paid out of the general fund.
Right, so because we're talking general fund items, it would literally move from general fund to utilities?
Utilities, which it is utilities.
That's a good idea.
My part in what I've shown you here is the need for two revenue technicians for the general fund. I've given examples of surrounding municipalities, what they have staffed, their population, if they enforce their police jurisdiction, if they are self-administered or if the state administers their sales tax, and whom they report to. Also included in there are the revenue that one revenue officer generates down there at the bottom for those three years. It's a lot of work. And then those are the number of licenses issued in those years as well.
I think, look at the number of employees, I think, is for the population.
Right, and I know y'all have, are with the police department, from what I hear, have talked about a code enforcement officer with them. But I'd include in that number of employees with the other municipalities, like how many code enforcement officers that they have that assist them as well.
That sounds like that would be partially shared with utilities.
It would be, and there is a code enforcement in 2017 budget. So that one, I don't think, we're not putting that again in 2018. That's just something we still have to fill.
Something for you to ponder, and I would, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Also, you know, it's collecting on the revenue that I feel like we need more labor. So it would more than pay for itself.
Okay, most everything I do, mine's a little unorthodox, so... Right now, we have, we call it a maintenance department, but the way it's being done is very unorganized. So we're being paid out of building and permitting. Cody and I's salary are being paid out of building and permitting. I hang my hat under Joe Walchina, so my time card's under Joe. We have no budget, so we pretty much operate under wherever we're working. So there's really no way to build anything out. I need some help, bad. I'm in the middle of, I'm trying to, anything that goes wrong from an ice machine to, say, a door closure, I get a phone call. And it's just me and one other guy. And this goes from a cement slab falling in the bay to a bulkhead falling in the bay to whatever it may be, a leg coming off of a chair. So we are just absolutely slammed. I really need three people, two at minimum, counting the one, not counting the one I got. So at minimum, right now, I would like to keep Cody and at least add two more.
This is basically building maintenance.
Right.
We would be creating, you know, a sub-department that he does utilize a little bit of the electric department with an electrician. But really, the building maintenance is and has been lacking for the number of buildings that we own. And of course, we are having to spend a lot of money on fixing things once they become a serious problem instead of just maintaining.
And a lot of my time is spent with, on projects. So I'm trying to bounce back into, and it would either, we could either figure out if y'all want me to go more on the maintenance side or be more involved on the project side with the construction process, and that would give me more time to put towards either or and maybe do a little bit better job. So right now, I'm just doing the best I can with what I got. So, you know, we have a guy that's in the electrical department who helps with maintenance. He's basically electrician, does our lights and stuff, but he's really not under me at all. So he's, he's under Joe. So that kind of creates a pretty tough time there, going through Joe and hoping that I can get the electrical guy, electrician Conrad, to work on lights or receptacles or whatever. Like, right now, he's doing ground fault receptacles on all the trees. So it's just, I haven't gotten real organized with it, but if y'all would entertain that thought of, let's try to get something together in, you know, in a building maintenance atmosphere, I'll put a little effort into it. But other than that, you know, I mean, if y'all say no, I'm not gonna, I don't want to waste a bunch of time or something.
How do you envision, because building maintenance would include a lot of general fund-type, you know, activities, whether it's, you know, working on the civic center, but then if you are working with the utilities, how would you, how, would you just come up with a, with a guesstimate as to what his percentage of time is?
It'd be work orders. When we're updated with munis, everything is charged to that department.
Right. So, you know, as we do it now, if I'm at the civic center and we need to, say, put refrigerant in this unit here, civic center makes the PO, and so I have to allow someone else to make the PO for me. And then, of course, we chase it down and try to make all that happen, and then get it back and get it put in.
It'd be like Jeff and IT.
Right, so it just depends on wherever we're at, so.
Do you take a stab initially in the budget as to what the percentage would be between the general fund?
It would all be expensed to the penny, to that department, from work orders.
But just for budgeting purposes, just to put a number in there, and what I'm kind of thinking ahead is that...
I'm gonna need a pickup.
Labor in the utilities goes into the labor cost adjustment factor, which doesn't go in there in the general fund. Kind of, and that's kind of getting in the weeds, but it's helping me to do that.
Jack, it is factored in through the revenue that comes in from the utilities to the general fund with utility administrative fee.
They have their portion of city hall's administration that is expensed to utilities. But with this, it would be more detailed because it would go through a work order. Everything that he does would be expensed to that department. But as far as budget, I mean, that would be, since it's a new department that we're kind of carving out, you know, we would have to, the first year.
Yes, it would take a whole lot of thought.
You know, I guess, you know, Lance, I'd love to say, this is me speaking from my own, from my own self and not for anybody else in the council, but I'd love to say, sure, let's get you two or three people and help you if you not see a need. I guess I'm anxious to see the total budget when we start talking about creating departments. And, you know, I can see the value and, you know, preventive maintenance and what that means in the future costs and things, for sure. Anybody, what is everybody else thinking on that?
Those two people, would they have experience hanging Christmas lights by chance?
Absolutely.
I'm the job expert.
Try to help you out, Joe.
Oh, one of them actually helps every year. Oh, goodness gracious. But other than that, I mean, you know, it all depends on what we do with that department. Of course, I need a, I need a pickup truck for my one guy now. His truck's in very bad shape. We're looking at about $35,000 for pickup, a tool body. Currently, I'm actually working with my own personal tools. So I gave Cody, I purchased some tools when I first came here for myself. When I hired my guy to help me, I gave him all the tools that I had purchased, and I just started doing what I had to do with what I have, so.
But that's not uncommon for mechanics to support.
It's not. It's not. It's not. But I need, we need some money for tools and electronic equipment and stuff, so we're asking for $7,000 to buy some tools and meters and... Oh, just a, there's a few little classes and stuff that we like to go to for our refrigeration license and continuing education, to be able to put units in and buy them at wholesale as I do. And so a little bit of schooling in there. The, I just put $2,000, and I really don't see us spending that much, but that was a, just a comfortable number there to get us a few little day classes in. Other than that, that's about all I got.
Any other questions? All right, Lance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
Robert, I see you looking at my papers like, more paper? No. I apologize. I don't expect you to look at all of this as we're sitting here, but I want to make sure you had backup to everything we'll talk about. So, here you go. It's not as bad as it looks. How about? All right. Thank you. And, Mayor, do you have one? I can attest to some of the stuff Lance just said because I literally got a text when I came in here from one of the facilities, people asking if someone could come over and look at something in the building. But he takes care of all the facilities that fall in Community Development Department. You've already heard presentations from the various people within the department that run the different facilities, so NICS, Civic Center, REC, Parks and REC. So you've heard from that. So what this is, is just what we've separated out for the community and economic part of it. And it used to fall, everything kind of fell under general fund. And Jill and I have been working together, like she's been doing with all the different departments, to separate it out and make it clearer. So what this comes down to is just what's left. And what I included here was, you've got the personnel, and you'll notice there are three different line items there. One is for the position, we had discussed it last year, and it wasn't approved, but I just put it back in, and I put the job description. It's in your packet, too, for it. The other one is a position that already exists, but it's called Special Events Coordinator, and we've just changed the title and changed the description. So we'll have to go through the whole process of bringing that to the Personnel Board and bringing that, you know, back in front of council for approval. But that's proposed here. And then the seasonal fill-in is because our current Special Events Coordinator is expecting. And if all goes well, as we hope it does, he'll be out during our, probably our busiest season. probably our busiest season. So, um, we're gonna need somebody to fill in for her while she's on maternity leave. And that's during, uh, you've got Christmas parade, the lighting of the trees, you've got the New Year's event, you've got, I mean, it could go, it could stretch beyond, so I'm not really sure yet. So, this is budgeted, um, hourly to have that person for... Jill, did we do sixty days, I think? No, what do we do for...
Ninety.
Ninety days, right. And it may not take that long, but we put that there. So, that's the, the first section. The next section goes into, um, training, travel, and those things, um, and that's, sorts all that out. These are Montgomery travel, you know, hard to predict. I mean, I don't know if I go up to a DECA or, um, to have meetings there a couple times, that's mileage if I have to stay over. I mean, it is a trip. If you can stay over and make the most out of driving up there, it's better. Um, uh, the governor's conference on tourism, that's for this tourism events coordinator position. Uh, she goes every year to that. Um, CAP is something that we're a part of, that's the regional coastal Alabama partnership. We've got two potential legislative trips in there, may not happen. I'm not sure what their plan is. I mean, last year, it was really good to be there, um, for the one that, uh, that we were invited to. It doesn't have to go, don't know if it'll happen. Um, and then you can see the other conferences in there. The laptops, um, our tourism events coordinator or special events coordinator has asked for, uh, just a Surface Pro. And if we get the other position, I went ahead and budgeted for the same thing for that person too. And I mean, I don't have to go through every line item if y'all don't want, but, I mean, you can see there's everything from office supplies, uh, and then printing for the community newsletter and design, W A B F, advertising, um, writing and postage, all that stuff that goes into community, the community development part. Um, we get into, there's a separate sheet in here that breaks out for you, the contributions. So, those all fall under this department too. Um, what I did, we went ahead and put, in the first section, you can see, these are people that have already requested funding from us and they're used to getting funded from us. Um, and we have their letters in. The second half, we have not received their actual request, but I wanted to put it there so you can look at, anticipate we would receive their, we will receive their request. I mean, EAC, I haven't received the request, but I'm sure it's coming, and that's a big one. So, you can just take a look at that. I know I've had discussions with some of you about how do we determine who we support. Um, I talked to Matt McDonald, um, about charitable giving in cities to make sure there were no, um, issues with us contributing to these organizations. They're not issues. Um, however, I would like to implement a process where we sign into an agreement with these organizations so they have some responsibility to report back to us what they did with the money and for us to be very clear about what it's to be used for. And I know there are resolutions that take place for these, but there, in most cases, no reporting back to us. Um, and then at the bottom, you'll see, uh, the grant matching funds. A lot of these, I believe, all of these you've already approved, but not all of them have come through, will come through for this year's budget. So, I just put them in there, the, the grants that we are getting, that are coming to the city where the city has some sort of matching expense. So, that's listed out for you there too. Some of it will happen this year, like I said, but I wanted to make sure it was all there. Under the events, the next page is, breaks down what we actually, um, spent in 2017 and what's proposed for the next budget cycle. So, there is, there's a slight increase in this, and there is detail to it, which I'm happy to send you if you want it, but it's, I mean, it goes through every single piece of what goes into these events. I know some of the bump is, you know, Eastern Shore Arts Center needs new decorations for Christmas, and we support that. And there are different things in there that we've, that we've done or agreed to do, so that's in the budget. Some of the things out to the side in the notes, you'll see, it says move to different line item. And again, that's just organizing into the correct cost center with Jill, but we wanted to note it so you could see that it did move. The next document is, um, a fee schedule, a rental facility projection, um, for raising, this is, these are just suggestions and ideas. And, um, been working with all of the facilities and then Michael, who is managing rental facilities and fee schedules for the, for the city. And so, we're working, this, these are, this is based on a lot of research and comparisons with municipalities that are nearby. We've taken into account that some of our facilities are not at the same caliber of some of these other facilities, so we've depreciated a little bit of what we charge based on what other cities provide. And then we've started looking at doing some à la carte charging for things that we just haven't charged for, and we've been losing money on it. I mean, we pay for it. We give it away. So, these are, this is literally just an idea, rough draft, well, not a rough draft, but it is, it is an idea based on a, a good bit of work, but... These are all things we'll have to bring before council for approval because they'll all have to change. It's a lot. But some of them haven't been changed in...
Eight years.
Eight years or more for some of them.
Some of them have never been charges.
Right, and some of them have...
They've never existed.
That's right. Some have never been charges at all.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Are you finished with your report?
Um, yeah, I think so. The rest are, the other two are just the descriptions. I did want to, the only other thing I wanted to say is that the projections for revenue, they don't include any sort of, um, grants or anything like that, which we fully anticipate we will be going after, including, um, several marina improvement grants to really work on that waterfront in the marina, to bring it up to, um, clean marina status and some other things. So, there are a lot of big grants out there that we fully intend to go after. Some of them require matches, some of them don't at all. But that's not in here, it's not projected as part of the revenue. Okay.
All right. First two things, um, under, uh, our proposed budget here for Pirate Booster and Thomas Hospital Foundation, I think those two items are both part of like an installment of a...
That's right.
Of a five-year or three-year commitment, and I was just curious where we, where we stand on those two items.
So, Thomas has, Lisa, does Thomas have one more year?
Yeah, one or two.
One or two more years?
Pirate Booster has paid this year, it says it's not paid, but I think this was the final year.
I thought so too.
Well, it was the final year. They have requested one more year for facilities improvements for athletic facilities. So, it's, it's separate from, and we did get a, a letter from them as well.
So, one more year.
Mm-hmm.
Additional, and then the Thomas, we think is maybe two years?
It's probably got at least two years. It was a five-year commitment, that was done a couple of years ago. It's, it's, we may be in the third year of it, of a five-year commitment.
Okay.
We're not beyond that, I don't believe.
All right. And then the other item I had, and we've, we've already been talking about this, but on some of the facility rentals, one, for example, that came up, I know, um, Eastern Shore Repertory Theater does a, uh, play on the bluff, did it on the bluff every May, and it's a huge, I mean, I know you've been...
Oh, yeah.
Huge turnout.
It's amazing.
And I don't know, the billing may have been off in years past, but I think their, uh, contract with the city in previous years has been, um, fifty, between a thousand and two thousand dollars.
That's right.
And I think they've got a pending contract for just under twelve maybe?
Yeah, eleven and change, right.
So, they have about a six hundred percent increase year over year, which is pretty substantial for, for a nonprofit, even though I know they're, they're selling tickets and, and, uh, raising money. I would like to see as a group, I mean, what, what can we do to defray that? I mean, there's a lot of things I feel like can be done in kind. I mean, the deposit, uh, I mean, a lot of the charges on, on that project, for example, and I've got it here, I can find it, you may be able to find it faster.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see what, what makes up those charges before I would say what could be done. Is that based on current fee schedule or this fee schedule that hasn't been approved yet? What is that, what are those numbers based on?
Um, that, well, so, here comes Michael to talk about it a little bit. One of the, Michael hasn't been a part of the conversation in the past for, for that particular event, so, um, we weren't, he wasn't able to give input to the cost.
To answer the question, those, um, those fees are based on what the ordinance, how the ordinance reads. There's things in the ordinance that aren't specific to the fees that are being charged based on that property. The ordinance itself states that there's not even supposed to be that kind of event held up on that location. With that, with that being said, it, it's still been allowed in the past, so we're following the ordinance based on the fees that the ordinance says to charge. What's been done in the past wasn't, um, you know, it was, that's what they were charged as a contract.
Can you give us an example of how?
I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, and I'm pulling it up for you.
Eleven thousand dollars.
You have a copy of that ordinance, do you?
Yeah, I've got, we've got all of it. Give me one side.
What are some of the big ticket items?
Well, they're on, they're on the site for twenty-four hours a day, seven days. So, if you were to follow the ordinance, it's seventy-five dollars an hour, the rent, the rent is per four hours a day. It's a hundred and fifty dollars a day, but they're on site for twenty-four, seven for seven days.
So, for example, there's a thousand fifty dollars for the park permit fee, uh, seven thousand cleaning deposit, but then you take that eight thousand and you get a fifty percent break on that, so that's four thousand, forty-two hundred for additional hours after four hours.
Is that a deposit that they get fully returned though?
Uh, it's, I guess it's eleven thousand, seven hu, eleven, six, seventy-five with thirty-five hundred in a refundable deposit, so about eight thousand.
Okay.
So, it's gone from, say, fifteen hundred to eight thousand.
But those, those daily fees you're charging the twenty-four, seven, so why are we charging twenty-four, seven?
Well, no, they're just, they're on the property twenty-four, seven, they're not being charged for twenty-four hours per day.
No, it's a...
Eight-hour days.
And that's part of the ordinance.
Now, in the past, they had a contract and agreement with the city, but they came forward to the council and, and they approved it in the past, but they haven't done so yet, so technically, following the ordinance, that, that would be their charge unless they came forward in front of you guys and you guys approved something else.
Right.
And there's also, um, service fees in there for the city that we normally didn't charge them in the past for on the garbage seven days a week.
And barricades.
Barricades, and we've never charged for all that, so we incorporated those fees as well. That's why it's higher.
Okay, so, but if I go to the barricade fees...
Currently, right now, there's no set fee schedule for any city services on these parks.
Right, so if there's none, then how was that, how does that...
It, we just showed what it...
So, you were assuming that this was passed?
No, no, sir, no.
Okay. I'm a little confused as to how, on the barricades, current rate is no charge, so if we don't have a current charge for it, how, are there barricade fees on there?
Twenty-eight hundred.
How much?
Twenty-eight hundred.
It's the labor.
How was it charged on there?
Well, she wasn't charged, she was asked to give a, a proposed invoice for that. Correct.
And you're right, that wasn't, that hasn't been approved.
So, you guys would see the cost.
You know, according to current ordinance, which they should be quoted, shouldn't be on there, but you might put the caveat, subject to, you know, I would think if they signed a contract paid right now, there's not one.
Well, I, I think their biggest concern is, you know, to, to come up with eleven thousand, seven hundred. They want to not, not lose the dates for the show.
Right.
But having to come up with eleven thousand.
Thirty-five hundred is a refundable, and there's twenty-eight hundred dollars of barricades that don't even exist.
That can come out. Because they're not approved.
So, now we're down, back down to below, below six, you know, fifty-five hundred maybe?
Okay.
A cleanup deposit per day.
Yeah.
If you're saying...
That's why it would help to see those to, you know, I mean, yes.
Yeah.
I think just looking at all of these, y'all look at them and see if old ordinance says need to be updated because...
Well, did you, Michael, aren't you saying that this, this ordinance has been in place the whole time? They've had contracts, they've just come forward and asked for a different agreement, and I think...
That's correct, yes, sir.
The municipal councils have agreed to let them have it at whatever rate the contract was.
Correct.
So, we're not saying we won't do that again.
That's right.
We're saying they haven't come to us yet to present that.
And per ordinance, we're trying to follow the ordinance to bill and...
Well, no, I disagree with you respectfully, Michael. It sounds to me like we're putting charges in there that don't even exist per the current ordinance. The twenty-eight hundred dollars for barricades doesn't even exist. We don't have an ordinance that says that barricades are twenty-three dollars each. That's, that's not even been adopted. It says no charge. So, I'm saying that, no, that's not what they've been given right now. They've been given a charge that doesn't exist.
It does sound like the barricades don't belong in there.
That's one, and I haven't seen the rest.
To show the fees, correct.
But otherwise, the, the agreement that was presented to them would have been what the ordinance requires to rent that space.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
And right now, the cleaning deposits are five hundred or a thousand.
And I think this is, I mean, this is something we have to talk about with many, many events.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up.
But, yeah, I'm glad you did.
They got some sticker shock, and I just wanted to...
This is definitely just a rough draft to put everything in front of y'all so you can see what are some things to look at.
Well, these are rough drafts, but those people have been given a contract to sign, uh, so that they can secure that for their event, and it just happens to be an example that came up during the budget discussion. We intended to talk about that, but since we're talking about it, I don't know how we can put charges on someone and say, this is what it's going to cost you, when those charges don't currently exist. It sounds to me, if they, if they were to sign a contract today, you can only put, you can only enforce the ordinance that exists today, not that it's being proposed.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, and there were a lot of people involved in this. We worked with Public Works and, oh, to get the cost together, but you're absolutely right, if it's not in the ordinance, it shouldn't be on there. So, that, that invoice needs to be updated and resent to her ASAP.
As of the current.
Yeah, without, without that charge, so we will take care of that, that's not a problem.
And check on that.
And then still, she will come before, and she, Erin, I'm sure someone on her board will come forward and talk about it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Appreciate that.
Try to get off of the wheel there.
No, I, I think that's important. We're going to talk about this with all the events. There's a lot of things like that, and I think, um, we discussed, Mayor and I, and Jill had discussed this, um, we do a lot of in-kind services here. It'd be great to monetize those and really show what we're giving to people beyond money, beyond cash. So, I, I do want to work on, just so we know and they know, you know, we are actually get, so those barricades, we can take them off, but that's a real cost to us. So, they should know.
Listen, I'm not even disagreeing with, that there may be some kind of charge and that the council chose to waive it for this or that, because we've always done it. But I do think that on that quote, I mean, if they're trying to put their money down for next year, you can only go by what the, what the ordinance is now.
No, you're absolutely right about that.
I think it's good just to say, this is what the city's giving to you, not, this is with any event.
Right, with...
Because all of it is economic development, and there is a value to those things, but being able to say, this is what the city is doing in kind and having an estimate would be good.
No doubt about that.
Yeah, I think there's definitely value in that.
Yeah, so...
Monetizing it so that whether, whether or not they pay that particular rate, they at least know what the city's done for them.
Well, and when you monetize it, you put that in a contract, because you're saying that you're providing this benefit to the city and we're giving you this, just like we do with Eastern Shore Arts Center or any other community development donation we give, we have to sign a contract and show that we're getting a benefit, otherwise, it's illegal for us to do that.
That's exactly right.
And that's why it was included on that, just to show you what we're, what, what we're giving them in services and rental rate.
Right. But we will, we'll update it and get it to Erin without the two thousand for the barricades, but at least she does know now that we, that's in kind. And then I'm sure she will ask, request to be on the agenda, and those dates, we are not booked, it's open for her.
What was that deposit, the refundable, thirty-five hundred?
Seven thousand was the deposit amount, based on the ordinance currently, it should be a thousand.
Per day.
I mean, or is that, it just says five hundred or a thousand mandatory cleaning deposit.
It's a thousand dollars if there's over fifty people per event, and over fifty, It's a thousand dollars if there's over fifty people per event, and over fifty, under fifty, it's five hundred dollars per day.
And we had a real problem with that. That was legit. We have had a lot of instances where staff and crews are left to pick up after events, and it's not fair to put our city crews out there to clean up after these big events, for sure.
And things come up. I mean, Public Works takes care of ant piles throughout the week. I mean, there's all sorts of things that come up, and they're basically on call for seven days. I only had one other thing, and I'd spoken with a couple of you about NICS Center. And I know, are we at time? Where are we? Five eighteen? We have an employee there. Do you want to switch? Can you switch with Jim? Recreation Coordinator, Facility Service Coordinator, who is part-time at the city, and we're requesting, and I can let Jim speak to it briefly, that she stay in the same pay grade but be moved to a full-time employee, and there are several extenuating circumstances about why we're asking for that. One is, as you all know, I'm trying to transition Paige. I mean, I'm trying to use not names, but it's hard, a special offense coordinator, not to be filling in for the NICS Center, because the NICS Center needs to be self-sufficient because that other role has plenty to do. But in order to do that, we need to make this other person full-time, so that NICS will be fully staffed. And there's another issue with some staffing at NICS that there's a full-time employee that cannot currently work full-time.
Let me step in and also say, Sherri Lee, so council, as you're pondering this, this is, they request this as an immediate need and not something for the budget year.
That's correct.
So as we're talking about the budget, this would be something that they quite honestly want, like at next council meeting, if possible. So I just kind of want to let you know what their urgency is and not that this would be proposed in the budget.
That's correct. Jim, do you want to add anything about that?
Yeah, we are business, our business. Our events here at the NICS Center have really grown. We're busy pretty much every weekend. We've got a lot of things happening, and I fully expect that to continue now that I'm at the helm, doing a lot of things there. This person that I'm considering will be my right-hand person as an event planner coordinator. She'll manage the calendar, take care of our membership data, newsletter and so forth. All these things were taken care of by others before. My role as the general, in the general management role will, you know, handle the financial matters, purchasing, our daily deposit we do, managing our budget, and the maintenance. A very huge thing with the NICS Center is maintenance, working with Cody and Lance all the time. They're climbing all over my building several days a week, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate those guys. They're terrific. Staffing, I've got to take care of that. The sales and marketing, that's sort of a new thing that's going to be coming to the NICS Center, and that's where my expertise is going to coming in. Getting sponsorships, getting more support for the NICS Center. We're going to grow this place. Right now, it's, I don't think it's being utilized a lot, but it's got a greater potential than it's doing right now. So this person that we need right away would be very, very instrumental in our goals and what I want to do with the NICS Center.
And the person, which, once again, you're saying is move them from part-time to full-time.
That's correct.
Right.
What is their grade right now? Do you know that?
She's at a grade fourteen, and she'll stay at the same grade.
And how many hours are they working now, nineteen?
Nineteen.
So, I have a difference.
There's a difference of about sixteen thousand is what I calculated.
About ten to about twenty-six.
Comments, I mean, this is, I hate to put you all on the spot, but if possible, I know that you would like to do this, and I'm sure, Mayor, you probably want to move this along quickly as well. So I welcome council to ask me, you know, some tough questions if you want to. It's kind of unusual, but I think that they are in a little bit of a, from what I've heard, unique situation. Maybe you have the advantage of Sherri Lee's kind of talked to me in great detail about it, and, you know, I know that, Jim, you have a passion for wanting to make things happen there. With the dynamics that are going on there, it certainly seems to make sense.
I talked to Sherri Lee and Jim about it the other day. It was really a matter of, you were out of town traveling. I tried to circle up with them, and it was sort of a, ran out of time before the agenda was getting finalized, so that was really, we should have been on here tonight.
We tried hard.
You know, it's one of those things, if we get up there, you know, tonight, we could vote unanimously to amend the agenda if you felt strongly about it. This is not one of those things, we're trying to slip past the public or anything. We just literally didn't, we didn't meet the agenda deadline. I know you were working hard on it last Thursday, I believe, to...
I was completely busy until about one o'clock, and I gave us about twenty minutes to make it happen, so... I think they're anxious to have some resolution on that.
Yeah, I mean, I have, if anything happens to one of the employees there, it's, it will be difficult to operate, so that's not a position you want to be in.
So this, if we were to ask the attorney to draw up a quick resolution, or the clerk, what would that look like? Is that a, is this the recreation coordinator? Did I write that down correctly?
This is the Facility Service Coordinator.
Facility Service Coordinator.
I'll be putting forward some title changes or suggested title changes to you for the different roles.
So if we simply said, and council, please, don't let me speak for you. If you think that, you know, you want to hold off on this to the next meeting, or you want to wait to the budget, fine, but I'm not really hearing any resistance, so if you say...
You're getting ready to.
Okay.
And it's not resistance to the idea as much as it is, I don't know the first thing what I'm voting on, anything about it. And to do it tonight is not a good idea, and I understand the need of urgency, but there's no, it doesn't make any sense at all to start voting on something on something I don't know anything about.
Okay.
And that's just one vote. Everybody else may, I don't know. But I would like to know a little something more about it until, before I sit there and cast the vote to spend sixteen thousand dollars.
Sure.
And I get asked, well, why'd you do that? Well, they asked me to. I mean, that'd be pretty much the only answer I got.
And I'll say there are a couple of sensitive personnel issues in there, so we can maybe talk about it. I don't know if we need an executive session for that, or if that's a personnel board issue or...
Why don't you just, you two, just call a meeting with Kevin and whoever else you need to talk to. You can talk to each council member.
Yeah, we tried to make all the, it's tough, but we'll certainly find y'all. We'll do that. I understand that.
I'd say it could be the best idea since white bread. I don't know, but that's the whole point.
It is.
Was it just a matter of a job description and what they're doing, or more specifics that you needed?
Slice salmon.
Yeah, is there, yeah, I mean, it is, it is because it's sensitive, there's some things I just can't...
The job description?
Oh, no, not the job.
No, I mean, is it the job description that you need?
It's the same job. It's just moving them to, from nineteen hours to full-time.
So what's the job description?
It is.
And benefits.
Right, that includes benefits, yeah. That number includes the benefits, but happy to come talk with y'all, you know, offline if we can't do it in this meeting.
That sixteen thousand includes benefits?
No, thanks for the question.
Yes, no way.
This is more as my point of, let's find out what we're voting on.
Hang on, hang on. Yeah. Jim? Yeah.
Call it twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-eight.
Yeah, from nine eight eighty-nine to twenty-six one oh-four.
It's part-time now, and it's, do they have the job description? I think that would be good forward.
I can do that.
Theoretically, job script's going to stay the same.
It will stay the same.
It'll just make...
It's just more time.
Or may have a few add-ons to what they're going to do.
There will be more. She will, this person will have more responsibilities than she has now as a day manager, and those are the things that I spelled out that she would do. So we would be getting a good value for the dollars that we pay her.
Maybe put together also, based on those job duties, what we'll get back as the investment.
We can do that, and we've got to look at her, I mean, her, there are issues with her pay grade too. We need to make sure that we correct.
Usually...
She's being paid under her grade right now. She needs to be paid within her pay grade.
I'm only smiling at the fact that this vote, I mean, from the more conversation we're having, this vote really needs to be held off till we find out exactly what's going on.
Yeah, that's fine. We can talk about it.
If it's not unanimous, I'd rather not walk it on.
That's fine.
So if you'll just give us everything, do your selling.
That's not a problem. I'll get you...
Hopefully, we'll survive till then.
There was some conversation that we would temporarily give her a few more hours per week. Is that still in play?
Can't do that.
Okay.
The voice from above.
Again, it was a conversation, so...
Okay, so what we'll do is meet with a few of you. What I'll do is actually put together what I've already got in front of me here, send it out, and then we can have further discussion and see if we can get it on the next agenda once everything's cleared up.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I think that's it, unless you have questions for me.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, any others?
That's it.
Okay. All right.
You don't think I'm going to do this by myself, do you?
I was going to let you if you wanted to.
Jeremy Sasser with Goodon Mills and Kaywood, and they're going to deliver the results of the sewer system that was passed this Saturday.
I'll get swapped over to the PowerPoint. Where'd Jeff go? Jeff, please help. All right. Again, as Richard said, I'm Jeremy Sasser with Goodon Mills and Kaywood, and we're here to give you the results of our capacity study on the sewer system. And we'll go, just get to phase one. Our scope, we were to analyze the current condition of your sewer system, the major basins in that system, and we were to analyze the current demand, just what you've got going into that system now. Could it handle any more development? And then if it couldn't handle that development, come up with what would need to be done to the system over the next one, five, and 10 years to meet that need. And what we did is we broke it down into six major basins. We've got the Thompson Hall Basin, which drains all the way to the Thompson Hall Pump Station, which is at the corner of Thompson Hall and...
Morphy.
Morphy. Not Morphy. It's down from Morphy. Sir?
Windmill?
Yes, sir, Windmill. Yes, there you go. Then you've got the Doghouse Pump Station, which is right there across the street from CVS. You've got the North Section Street Station, the South Section Street Station. Then you've got one at North Mobile in Fells, and then everything else, kind of just gravity drains to the wastewater treatment plant. So those are your six major basins that we broke everything down into. Just give you a few highlights. Here's the Thompson Hall Pump Station. It encompasses four square miles. It's got two smaller pump stations that pump to it, and then it has five low-pressure sewer systems that also pump into it. You've got the Doghouse Pump Station Basin, nine square miles. It's got three supplemental pump stations, and one of those is the Thompson Hall Pump Station. So Thompson Hall pumps to this one. And your Doghouse Pump Station is what I would consider the major pump station in town. It pumps down an eighteen-inch gravity line that runs down Fairhope Avenue, then down Fairwood, and then down Bayou to the treatment plant. It handles probably at least half of the sewage that is generated in Fairhope every day. The North Section Streets, excuse me, North Section Street Pump Station, it's got a drainage area of five miles. It's got six supplemental pump stations that pump to it, along with 10 of your low-pressure systems. And then it pumps directly to the wastewater treatment plant along Section Street.
It is not gravity feet?
Gravity's for like 200 feet. Then you've got the South Section Street Pump Station. It, right now, technically covers 41 square miles. Most of that is undeveloped, but that also is some of your prime developable land. So it is going to start getting taxed more and more every year. And as you see, it's already got 12 supplemental pumping stations that pump to it, plus nine low-pressure gravity systems, or low-pressure systems. And what this South Section pumps up section and feeds into a gravity line that flows right down Church Street. That 12-inch line starts at Fells and runs all the way down Church straight to the wastewater treatment plant. And then you've got the Fells Avenue Mobile Pump Station. One of your smaller areas, 2.7 square miles, and it also pumps to that 12-inch gravity line running down Church Street. And then the wastewater treatment plant basin, sorry, thank you, Rob. It is your smallest basin. All of this gravities to the wastewater treatment plant, except for three very small pump stations that are just areas that can't gravity to it. All right, current conditions. The way we did this is we obtained pump station information from city staff. We worked very closely with Dan and Richard, and we obtained all the pump sizes and pumping capacities of each of the stations. We took flow data that was available, and then also the SCADA information. SCADA information is essentially the computer systems that monitor the pump stations, tell us when they're running, when they're not. We also obtained the GIS data, showing where all the force mains and gravity mains were in town, how they were routed, elevations, things of that nature. And then we used the road and parcel layout to just kind of follow it and make sure what streets we were on and what all drain to it. Your current treatment system, right now, your treatment plant is set up to handle four million gallons a day. That's what it's permitted for with ADIM. Your current load is 2.2 million gallons per day, plus or minus, just depending on the day of the week. It's recently been upgraded, and it discharges directly into Mobile Bay. Pipe goes underground to roughly 3,200 feet out into the bay and discharges the clean water.
How clean is that water when it...
Technically, the treatment standards you meet today, it's pretty much, you could drink it. It doesn't have the chlorine and all that gets fluorine and fluoride and all that stuff in it, but it's clean water.
I got a sampler, so you're right here.
We did the point, you wouldn't do it.
I'm out on that, man.
It's drinking.
Sewage in there.
It's drinking water. All right, here's the meat of where we're at. Three of the four major lift stations that we studied are loaded beyond their capacity right now. And when I say loaded beyond their average daily flow capacity, that is, on a typical day, the amount of flow they are designed to handle. Pump stations are not designed to, for the pumps to run 24/7. Really, you don't want them running more than half the time, and that's stretching it. But as you can see, the South Section Street Station is really the only one that's not loaded to its average capacity right now. But your North Section, your Thompson Hall, and your Doghouse stations are all above their average daily flow capacity.
Can we zoom in on that? I can't see those numbers.
I don't know how to do that with this council.
I'm trying to see the capacity versus the load.
You want me to read you the numbers?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Doghouse, it's got a design capacity of 800 gallons a minute. Your average capacity is 400 gallons a minute, and right now, you've got 633 gallons a minute going to it. There we go. Thank you, Jeff. So, I mean, right now, I mean, you don't have sewage running onto the ground or in dry vents, but it's exceeding its capacity. The pumps are running more than they need to, which is going to lead to more wear and tear, and they're going to need to be replaced a lot sooner.
How do you say that they're exceeding it? What is your, you're saying the design capacity, and you're looking at the current load. Is that because some of those are greater than 50%?
Yes, that's the gist of it. I mean, when I say design capacity, it can pump 800 gallons a minute. If it's running, the desired load is 50% more or less. So the Doghouse is running 18 hours a day, give or take. And then Thompson Hall pumps to the Doghouse Lift Station. So as Thompson Hall gets more load on it, which is Firethorn, everything out along 181, pretty much south of Walmart, so as that area develops, it's just going to continue... So as that area develops, it's just going to continue to put more stress on that Doghouse Pump Station.
How many pumps in the Doghouse Pump Station?
Two.
They run alternately, right?
They do run alternately. Yes, sir. So when the station you want it to run, say, half the time, each pump run six hours a day.
Now you're looking at each pump run a quarter of the time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a little bit misleading if they say design capacity, and they say, but we only want you to run half of that.
Well, but here's the thing. When you design a pump station, yes, you put two pumps in it, but it gets into a study of hydraulics. Both of those pumps running at the same time, you're not going to get 1,600 gallons a minute. You're going to get 900 to 1,000. That's just standard engineering practice. So yes, that, I can see where you're saying that's misleading, but you can't just say, all right, I've got two, so I can pump 1,600. You don't... I mean, if you have both of those pumps running, that means you have a big problem.
Basically, it's like a chain design for 2,000 pounds. I don't want to stick 1,900.
No. No, sir.
Kind of like that.
Very much, yes, sir. Any more questions on those? Okay. Jeff, can you zoom in again for me, buddy? I don't like this, just being able to talk on a microphone. It just happens. All right. But go, one more thing on the pump station. South Section Street, it will be past its average daily flow capacity by 2020 if development continues at the rate it's going. All right. These are your major gravity outfalls that these pump stations pump to and go to the wastewater treatment plant. The 18-inch line I mentioned that runs down Fairhope Avenue, then down Fairwood and Bayou, it's got a total capacity, if that pipe is running at max, of 2,324 gallons a minute. Your design capacity on that is, what you design to is that pipe being half-full, so that when you have rain events and you get water coming into those lines, you've got that capacity built in. Right now, the current load on that 18-inch pipe is 1,650 gallons a minute. So it can handle dry day flows. It's not half... Is that what you're doing, Jack?
I got a little calculational question coming up.
Okay. I was expecting that question. So as you can see, it can handle the dry day flows, but it's exceeded what you were typically designed to. The 12-inch gravity line running down South Section, it's got a total capacity of 1,072 gallons a minute, with your design capacity being 401. And if every pump station is on that can pump to it, you're at 1,650 gallons a minute. That's if all three of the pump stations are on at one time and everything's going to it. It's got a lot of flow in it.
Well, I'm looking at that current load, just on that 18-inch line.
That is a typo on the 12-inch gravity line.
Well, on the 18-inch. What is it supposed to be?
16... The current load is 1,650.
So 1,650 times 20, some 60, times 24 is 2.4 million gallons. It's saying that line alone's exceeding what our daily treatment at the plant is right now.
All right. Good question. Since everything in... A lot of your system is pumps-based, so you have to base that on all of the pumps being on at one time.
It's kind of like electric load, right?
Yes, sir. You've got a design... So...
Well, there's peak flows during the day.
There's peak on peak usage.
Yes, there's peak flows during the day. So if every pump was on that could pump to it, you're at 1,650.
Current load, those are peak loads?
More or less, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I see what you're getting at. It's...
It's high-flow.
It happens quite a bit. It happens quite a bit. Just looking at the SCADA data, it does happen quite a bit during the day. But 12-inch gravity line, that number is wrong. That should be 1,150. Sorry. That was a typo. The current load on that 12-inch, if pump stations are running at the same time, is 1,150 gallons a minute.
Is that total capacity correct?
Yes, sir.
On that or a typo?
Yes, sir. That is correct. That's based off the size of the pipe and the slope of the flattest section in the system, which is what that's going to be your constriction point. Then the 8-inch gravity line that the Thompson Hall Pump Station pumps into that is behind Winn-Dixie, it's, as you can see, it's overloaded right now, as well as the 8-inch gravity line that drains directly to the Doghouse. It can catch the intermediate... It catches the intermediate school pump station, which is one of your biggest.
Is that really 19...
It's, again, if every pump's on. The intermediate... The only reason that's not, doesn't hurt as bad, the intermediate school pump station does not pump a lot. That's where 1,000 gallons per minute of that is. It does not pump... It hardly pumps. I've looked at the SCADA during the summer, and then I pulled it when school started the other day. It just does not pump a lot. So when it does turn on, builds up in a manhole a little bit, drains on out. So that can be a little misleading there as well. That bothered me as well. That bothered me. Yeah, that one bothered me. Growth projections.
They measured that at halftime of an intermediate school basketball game?
I even checked at lunch. There wasn't a peek at lunch. It surprised me. I was very surprised when I looked at that data. All right. For the growth projections, what I did is I pulled the single-family building permits that Eric has issued over the last... I've looked back all the way to 2000. But for purposes of this, I really went to after the Great Recession ended and kind of this new growth pattern that we're in. And the average for the last four years has been 316 single-family building permits a year, with a low of 268 and a high of 363. And as you can see, it's increased every year. 2017 through the end of June was on pace to beat 2016 by a couple of permits. So we're about the same for 2017. And for our projections, what I did is I used the low number in those four years for low growth. The average would be considered medium growth or average growth. And then a high-growth year I took is 363 homes, which is the highest year we've had so far.
You got about 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. I'm getting there. Almost there.
I'm just giving you heads. I didn't want to tell you in 10 minutes you had no time.
And then over the... What I did is I took the city's comprehensive plan and kind of studied where the growth for the town was projected over the next 10 years. And then, so what I said is between 2018 and 2022, most of the growth is going to occur down that South Section Street area and out in the Thompson Hall Basin. And then 2023 through 2027, I think it's going to stay in those two basins, but also go really into the Doghouse Basin. 181 will be four-lane by then, and I really think when 181 gets four-lane, you're going to see that corridor explode up around 104. Just, that's an opinion, but that's just a guess. Jeff, please. Okay. I did not put low-growth number on this chart, mainly because just the way things are going right now, I don't see it happening. But it's in the final report. So it will be in the final report for documentation purposes. I just didn't put it here because we're not going through that period right now. And as you can see, the Doghouse Pump Station by 2022 will have more flow coming to it every minute than it can pump. So it's got... It has to be fixed. It has to be upgraded soon. Thompson Hall will be close to it... Thompson Hall, North Section will be close to that pumping capacity by 2027, and South Section will be there around 2027 as well. And that's if you have average growth. If you have high growth, you'll be at about the same rate. All right. Recommendations. This is going to be the hardest one to see, but I will just talk you through it, and then I'll... I can... I'll email you a copy of the presentation tonight, and then we'll have the report as well. But our major recommendations are to rebuild the Thompson Hall, Doghouse Lift Stations, the North Section Street Station, and the South Section Street Station. And when I say rebuild, come in, put in new pumps, rebuild the wet wells, which is the concrete structure underground. We did inspections on those, and most of them are showing signs of pitting, which is the concrete just getting holes in it from all the gases that are in there. None of those are lined with a liner that's meant to protect it. So if you're going to spend the money to upgrade these things, get them where they need to be, go ahead and redo the wet wells, or you'll be doing that in 10 years. Go ahead and do it all at one time. Save yourself some money.
What's the life expectancy of a wet well? And can you... You know, we treated the concrete when we upgraded the sewage treatment plant so that we wouldn't get the pitting as much. I think we put a special paint or coating in there. What is the life expectancy of that?
It varies greatly. Richard, you've...
Well, and it depends on what kind of flow gets to it, too. But, you know, they can last as little as 10 years, and they can last as long as 30 to 40 years. I mean, that's been my experience. Kevin, you got...
Well, it's a lot of the ones we got. The one in South Section Street is built 52, I think.
Well, it's held up.
Then it's held up pretty well.
They have... They have relocated a manhole at South Section.
Everything's a function, as far as longevity is how it's used. If you sat there and ran pumps like you're saying right now, you're not going to have it... You're not going to expect the 20- or 30-year life expectancy on that particular thing.
And it depends on the strength, or let's say, the strength of the sewage.
It's near Kevin's house.
I wasn't going to go there, but... Just when I say the strength, the different... The makeup of the gas is the makeup of the sewage. Is it coming from an industrial plant, or is it regular household sewage? Grinder pumps have a tendency to change the makeup of it as well. So it's... It varies greatly. So it's hard to give you a straight answer.
Did you name these in order of priority, or is this something we would tackle all this at the same time?
I said tackle it all at the same time. South Section Street is probably the one that could wait. Just, it's not at that rate yet. But the Doghouse is the big one, and Doghouse and Thompson Hall would be... If I said you said I can only do two, I'd go Doghouse and Thompson Hall. Those are probably the two that are going to have the most demand, put them on... Put on them in the next couple of years and are the most critical.
Basically, by doing this, you're just upgrading the pumps and the newness of the system.
You're upgrading the capacity of them as well.
Are you enlarging the wet wells?
Yeah. You would more than likely have to enlarge all these wet wells as well.
Actually, that's what I was going to get to, and the fact that if you put in brand-new pumps, you still have a problem with the capacity of the flows.
Because you're going to...
I mean, in other words, if you put a pump, it'll do 1,000 gallons a minute, but it only goes to a line that will only take 500 gallons a minute. You've got a problem.
Right. So you would be upgrading the wet wells, and most of the force mains that are in place that these pump into are sized to handle more flow than they already are. So that...
I was thinking more in terms of where you had the gravity flows.
I'm getting there.
I've got about three.
The 18-inch gravity that runs down Fairhope Avenue and onto the plant, it needs to be upgraded to a minimum of 24, depending on some other decisions that are made. And then the... I'm recommending that we bypass the 12-inch that runs down Church Street and pump all the way to the plant with a force main. And the reason I say that is a force main is about three foot deep. You dig a small hole, you put it in the hole, you cover it back up. These gravity mains are 10... Could be 10, 12-foot deep. You start digging that up and replacing it down Church Street, you're shutting it down for a long period of time. And I'm saying we pump it through a force main all the way down Fairhope Avenue, so we don't dig up Fairhope Avenue again with that big excavation to replace that gravity line.
Is your idea the directional bore for this purpose, or...
It would probably be just... And it'd be an open trench. But I put some money in our cost estimates for coming in and putting a good new surface on that side of the road so that you don't have a patch running all the way down the road.
That's from Fells to the plant?
Yes, sir.
And what would you say that size force main would be?
It's an existing... It's an existing 10-inch force main. So we would run it to the 10 all the way to the plant, all the way down Church Street.
The other thing the force main would alleviate is the future manhole. The manhole, before the feet, so whatever the distance is, you can alleviate all of that.
You're eliminating that water intrusion along that.
You are. Yes, sir.
Which is a big issue there in that part of town.
Yes, sir, it is. During the last big rain event, I guess it was that first Friday in August, your average flow at the plant is 2.2 million gallons, and you were over 5 that day, 5 million gallons a day on that first Friday in August. So you've got a lot of water intrusion in your system. And that's going to be further into our recommendations. We'll skip to that. Fairhope has approximately 90 miles of gravity swell. I've got five minutes.
You got that long.
At the most. All right. We need to get to option three, don't we, Richard? One option to handle all the future demand for the sewers is to build a new plant on the east side of town. And what we would propose is everything west of 98 goes to the existing treatment plant, and everything east goes to possibly a new plant. I know you've upgraded the existing plant, and with all the growth that's going to occur down South Section, you still will use every bit of that capacity. Just the growth over the next 20 years is going to exceed the capacity of your plant. So you will either have to upgrade it or build a new one somewhere else anyway. And we've talked to Dan, and we... There's just no room at the existing plant to really upgrade it much more, to go bigger.
The one thing, even though if we built a new plant, the age and the decrepency of the existing lift stations that we are having, you're still going to have to redo those.
You would. Yes, sir. You would. You would have to upgrade them as well. Yes, sir. You would, yeah. The pump stations are going to have to be upgraded.
It's not a function of building a new plant and you alleviate repairs.
No, sir, it's not.
Because they both may have to be encompassed. The other thing about a new lift station is you don't have to have a 2 million gallon new lift station if you found a site that, basically, you could expand as time went on.
Right.
Just let's take care of the problems we're having now, and for the next five or 10 years, extend this over to this one, and then as we need to expand, the system is there to expand, whereas we don't have that at the existing treatment plant now.
Correct. Correct.
Wouldn't some of these upgrades change if you had that in the full-year plan?
A new plant? Yes, ma'am, it would. It would. And that's the big reason we wanted to bring this up today, is a new plant is not... It doesn't say you don't have to do all of this stuff that we've just talked about, but in 10 to 15 years, you're going to start running out of capacity at your existing plant. And decisions that I would say are made here would need to take that into account, whether you're going to eventually go out east and build a new plant, or somehow how you upgrade the existing one, I don't know.
I'm sorry?
They're going to love that.
Especially when we tell them what we're going to do with it. No, well, I mean, that's just a lot to digest, I understand.
It is.
If you make that decision now, then you look at how you can minimize some of the upgrades we're talking about with transmission capacity, because we're going to be shedding some of that load down the road anyway. So it's just a phased approach to upgrading the transmission system that you need to upgrade immediately, and then look at how you can start planning the process of moving some of that flow on the other side of 181, hopefully.
Yeah, we're about to... You got any closing statements?
Cost estimate. We did all of the recommendations that I had laid out. You're at about $6.3 million. That includes contingency as well as design fees.
Including building a new one?
No, 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 no. That's just the... That 6.3 is just that right there.
And it doesn't include the assessment of the existing gravity system that consists of 80... consists of 80 some miles of which gravity line, some thousand, 2,000 manholes, I forget the number, but.
I forget.
I mean, there's some work that needs to be done with that too, to start to minimize some of the, the weather issues that we face now.
The bottom line is, you know, we have to start somewhere, we have to start with a priority list of what we got to do, because the, you know, the days of hanging around waiting and kicking that can down the road are over. We can't hardly do that. And so, you know, we're going to have to get a line of direction as far as prioritize what we need first for the expenditures that we're going to need, and then plan, have an overall plan of how we're going to expand this each year as we go along, but that's just the way I'm looking at it.
I agree, and, and we do want to validate some of the flow data, because we're all basing it on what we think the pumps are pumping and, and, uh, cycle times and run times with those pumps, so we want to try to validate that. And we want to look at some of the already permitted subdivisions, I know there's a lot in the Point Clear area, we want to kind of look at what that progress might be in the next three or four years, and just validate what we have with some information from the meter department as to how many existing customers we have in specific areas to make sure that the flow data we're looking at is consistent. And once we get that, then we'll start applying these priorities you're talking about on what is the most critical project, and then work our way down to what we can put off soon.
On these, um, lift stations that need to be rebuilt, repowered, for lack of a better word, for the pumps, is it possible, do we have the land available, and is it even possible or wise to put, to piggyback on another, uh, wet well as opposed to putting a larger wet well? Maybe there's a wet well that's in decent shape, but we just need to double the capacity so we could, uh, put in a sister wet well to some of these?
You probably could do that at some of the locations, we didn't really get into it that deep. I think you have some room at Thompson Hall, uh, South Section.
South Section's got some room in the driveway.
Uh, Dog House would be a little challenging, I don't remember exactly the property lines, but I think Dog House would be a little challenging.
The other thing we can do is bypass some of these lift stations with continued force mains that will, and we may have to upgrade another pump capacity-wise, but we can bypass the pump station that discharges into, to eliminate having to upgrade that one to a significant added volume pumping capacity-wise.
I think one thing that would help answer some of what you're talking about, Richard, and some of the questions you have, would be a sewer model, which essentially would take metered flows and build a true model of your system, and it takes account, and takes into account run times, distances it has to flow, things of that nature, and really, you can narrow, you could zero in on some of these improvements, because it might say, well, really, you need to fix Thompson Hall more than Dog House. And right now, looks like Dog House might need it. Just, you could answer those questions with a model, uh, it takes some time, but it, I think that is the best approach. If we're really talking about looking at this for the next 20 years, I think a model is really the way to go.
Probably wind up saving us some money.
It probably would, yes, sir.
It's like pay for itself, ten times over.
Probably would.
Well, gentlemen, we need to adjourn, our council meeting, we're on a little later.
We appreciate your time. And we're going to continue to build on the data we have, and we'll start working on priorities.
I will, and I was, I was going to say is, I know I didn't get to go all the way through it tonight, and I know I can only meet with two of y'all at a time, so if y'all want me to come sit down with you at a later date and just kind of answer these, go through the rest of it, just let me know, I'll be happy to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank y'all.
We're going to adjourn, the work session reconvened about five minutes.